This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor, here. City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
And for the record, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Reed is excused.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary during the meeting. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise please for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from 6:12:23 were received. Commissioners, any corrections, comments? Then they will stand as submitted. Communications proposals from Commissioners. We'll have the Commissioner Logan.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm happy to report that the Audit Committee, consisting of myself, Commissioner Reed, and Commissioner Dean, who served as a substitute in the event of absence, has met twice in the recent past. The first meeting was on May 9th when the committee heard a staff analysis of two respondents to an RFP to conduct audits for the next three fiscal years. Based on that analysis and subsequent recommendation by staff, Commissioner Reed and myself selected the firm, Mayor Dusel, from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, to complete our audits in the near future. It is our recommendation, when the mayor deems it appropriate, to accept a motion to approve the Audit Committee's recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Mayor Dusel for the fiscal years '23, '24, and '25 financial and federal single audits. And also, Mr. Mayor, the Audit Committee met again on June 12th. With city staff present, we heard from Tyler Brandt of Junkermeier Clark Campanella Stevens of Helena, and I'm happy to report that this firm presented a clean audit, an annual comprehensive financial report for the City of Helena. Commissioner Dean and myself recommend that we move to accept these findings, and when you deem it appropriate, to accept the FY 2022 financial and federal single audit performed by Junkermeier Clark Campanella Stevens, PC. And finally, Mr. Mayor, I believe perhaps City Manager Burton and Director Danielson may want to offer insight into these two items.
Thank you, Commissioner. Manager, okay, Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am pleased to report that JCCS had completed our fiscal '22 financial and federal single audits, and they were considered clean, no findings. There were a couple of recommendations that they did provide us that are in your packet, and we will be taking that into account and implementing that going forward. There were just some small internal control recommendations that they made to the city that we'll incorporate. The annual comprehensive financial report is a very lengthy report. The sections that you might find most helpful to understand the financial condition of the city is the Management Discussion and Analysis section of the report. And then also to understand the transactions and some of the agreements and pension-related information, et cetera, is found in the notes to the financial statements, which is another great area to dive into should you want to explore a little bit more about the city's finances and all the reporting requirements that we're required to do by governmental accounting standards, governmental accounting standards, and also federal single audit standards for those reportings. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the audit.
Director, Manager Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Danielson, could you remind me how many years in a row that the City of Helena has received the GFOA Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting?
I'm thinking 33 or 34 years. It's listed in the Letter of Transmittal in the ACV, and so that's an esteemed award that the city has been proud to receive over the last many years, and we're happy to continue that tradition.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I wonder, Ms. Danielson, can you maybe talk a little bit? I think we all like when we're able to hire within the community to do these type of, well, for all things, but audits in particular. Can you maybe talk about some of the trends that you're seeing in the accounting world and why we've had to move away from a contract like JCCS to this new contract?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Dean, yes. So nationally, there seems to be a pretty large decline in people wanting to go into the accounting profession. They've either retired out, or they've left for other reasons, and Helena is no exception to that. Our local accounting firms in town are experiencing the same difficulties that we're experiencing nationwide with the lack of the ability to hire professional accountants into their firms. And in addition, government audits are continually getting to be more and more complicated and require more and more staff time, not only to prepare, but also to audit. And so the local CPA firms are having difficulty keeping up with those standards and hiring staff in order to audit. We did send the RFP out to the entire list that's on the State of Montana's website of eligible firms to do our audit, and the only two responses we got were from two out-of-state firms, both very professional, qualified organizations, but we were disappointed that local CPA firms were not able to have the staff resources in order to continue our audit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Danielson. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the audit. Question about what, sir? About what? No. You may ask the City Manager after the meeting, and he will entertain your question. So I'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of the audit.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve acceptance of the FY 2022 financial and federal single audit performed by Junkermeier Clark Campanella Stevens, PC.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? No, that's communication proposals. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor, I think you should take public comment before you take the vote.
This is on a communication proposals from the Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were on the audit report.
It is under the audit, but it's from them.
Mayor, Commissioners, I would, I guess I would just suggest that you open it up for public comment since we had a request for a question, and also you are taking a vote.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, is there any public comments on this topic? Yes, sir. Please come to the mic.
My name is Richard Chudy, and I appreciate you letting me ask a question. The question I had was, they referred to this was an outstanding record of passing audits. Question I have is, how does that relate to other cities? Are we like the best, or is Great Falls, Billings, Missoula, have they also received the same, you know, accolades for consistency? That was my question.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands or written public comment online.
Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
With your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'll begin again. Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Report from the City Attorney.
Mayor, Commissioners, I have nothing to report.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the Audit Committee's recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Mayor Dusel for the FY '23, FY '24, and FY '25 financial and federal single audits.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final, any comments? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Report of the City Manager.
Mayor, I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. We will go a little out of order today because it was requested to go down to item echo. So we'll move on to item echo E. Consider a resolution of intentions to recreate a special district to annual finance, the maintenance and management of public trees on public right-of-way and in city parks. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, we have a resolution before you, actually, it's a resolution of intention before you, to recreate a special district for the annual financing of the urban forestry district. The city has several improvement districts, which we do manage. Special improvement districts are created to collect funds to be used for a specific function or a limited number of functions. Two sessions ago, the legislature changed the law and has now required the city to come back and ask for the recreation of a special district that has already existed. This particular district has existed under a different name since the 1990s, but in 2010, the Commission moved forward with making it a special urban forestry district. The difference with that is a special district requires a land survey, and it allows a time of protest period for those that will be imposed the assessment, the option to oppose the district and/or the assessment. According to the statute, again, we have to obtain the services of a professional surveyor, which we did. That survey redefined the boundaries of the district, and those boundaries will be in effect as of August, when we bring the resolution forward to the Commission for approval. The second item is that the district and the resolution of intention need to describe the services, and the services are to plant, protect, maintain, preserve, and care for public trees and public rights away in public land. There is a fact sheet on our website that also explains a lot of the questions that people may have about the special district. But primarily, we employ a couple of arborists and also seasonal staff in order to maintain the tree canopies, and not only their trimming, but planting in areas, determining their health, and managing pests in the trees. And so that's the primary district of the assessment. It's a restricted assessment that is only assessed to maintain the urban forestry district. It cannot be used for other purposes within the city. The cost currently for the assessment that is currently being charged to property owners is $39 a year per tax parcel. So it's not a new district. It's not a new assessment. It's an assessment that's already being paid for those that are in the existing boundaries of the district. This new recreation will expand the boundaries to all of those city properties that have been annexed into the city since it was last created in 2010. So far, and we will continue to accept them through August, the city's received approximately 297 letters. Of those letters, because we did include in our notice a form where they could agree or disagree with the recreation of the district, we've received about 297 letters back. 177 have expressed that they do not wish to continue the recreation of the district, but we have received 124 that are in favor of recreating the district. The proposed operating budget for the urban forestry district for fiscal '24 is approximately $544,000. We are not asking to increase the rate. It will remain at $39 per tax parcel for fiscal '24. That can come and will come before the Commission every year during the annual budget cycle, but in my discussions with the open lands manager, the arborists, and the Parks and Rec Director, they don't believe that an increase is necessary in the next year or so. But we will revisit that every year and bring it to the Commission, and it is subject to public comment when we set all of the rest of the assessments for the city. At this time, I am able to answer any of your questions if you have them.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Commissioners, comments?
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask a brief question? So one of the things that our arborists do are responding when we have pretty severe storms in which there are tree damage in the streets. We've had a number of those over the last few years with whole trees coming down all over town. If this district were to not continue, would we be able to employ the arborists that take care of that kind of tree cleanup and damage?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Dean. That is going to have to be a priority that the Commission will have to set in the budget process. If the district is not recreated, the funding for the district goes away. We could pay for those services out of our general fund, but as you have seen through this most recent budget cycle, how tight our operating funds are, decisions would have to be made to likely look at other services that may have to be reduced in order to afford having the arborists come into the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a comment that I would like, if I could, to reserve just prior to the vote.
Please.
Maybe after public comment, if that's okay, and then prior to the vote. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public? Yes, please come up and introduce yourself and...
Mr. Mayor and members of the Commission, my name is Ken Bailey. I'm a resident in Helena, and I'm retired. I used to work for state government, was very active in the state legislature, testifying before committees, writing fiscal notes, and those kinds of things. And in that time, of course, there are many types of statutes that have a need for reauthorization, either because of new legislation being proposed or by reaching a sunset date of legislation. And I'm hearing what we would refer to as, quote, "soft opposition," meaning that I'm not against the idea of the district are gathering money to do it, but that I believe that this Commission hasn't done the due diligence that's required in reauthorization of trying to take a look at the program and saying, what's gone well? What hasn't gone well? What should we do differently for the next 15 years? At least that's what's communicated to me in the letter that I received as a parcel owner. So, you know, I would ask that the Commission give some consideration that the proper way to do this is to go back to the city officials who work here in this area and say, so again, we need to stop and pause. That's why it needs to be reauthorized, and come up with a statement that says those things. And why should we continue this tax on residents for the next 15 years? This just looks like you're going to rubber stamp it, and from the comments, I would put it as you're kind of saying, well, somebody's got to trim the trees, so let's rubber stamp the money to keep doing it. And, you know, would there be anybody that said there's something that hasn't gone right? You know, I remember when we chopped down all the trees on Rodney Avenue, people seemed surprised. And again, I may be wrong in saying this, I apologize if I am, but from the newspaper reports, I had a sense that we said, well, we got a good deal on these trees, so let's put those in.
Sir, please wrap up. We have two minutes per comment.
So I would suggest that we consider, what more should this be doing? How does this program contribute to the resiliency and safety of the community? And give that consideration before pushing forward the reauthorization. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk. We may need the timer. Please.
Hi, my name is Jim Campbell, and I live with my wife at 18 South Harrison Avenue. I want to thank you folks for having this public hearing. Let me try to paint a big picture. I have lived in this town for 82 and a half years. During that time, I've seen a lot of beautiful trees come and go, some with disease and some with old age. Thank you, Helena, for our beautiful trees. You folks are my elected officials. You set the city budget for fiscal year 2024 at $99,589,000. You hired a city manager at an annual salary of $198,400 plus $450 car allowance per month. He knows something about trees. After graduating from Carroll College, my first job paid me $400 a month. That's $4,800 a month. Now you know how outdated I really am. The city manager has a Park and Recreation Director. His annual salary is $126,100 plus benefits. He also knows something about urban forestry. The Parks and Recreation Director has an urban tree specialist at an annual salary of $71,700. That person knows a lot about trees. With all that money, I hope your staff can come up with a better plan to manage our urban forests, other than tax us taxpayers another one-half million dollars. Please, please challenge your staff to do a better job. There must be some way to rearrange your $99 million budget to address urban forestry without a special assessment. Pardon?
Please wrap up. You have two minutes.
Okay, I will. I'm sure I'm under three minutes. Last month, I received three letters. One from your Finance Director about creation of a special district, one from the Montana Department of Revenue, and one from AARP. The Montana Department of Revenue letter said the home I built 30 years ago for $190,000 has an assessed value of $505,300. It now has a current assessed value of $750,900. The third letter was from the AARP, telling me the best place to live in my home is to live in my home.
Sir, I'm sorry, but you have to wrap up.
Okay. The best place for me is to live in my home. Yes, I want to stay in my home, but how do I do that? Hundreds of us old people here in Helena would like to stay in their homes. Maybe your mom or dad would like to stay in their home if they can afford the property taxes. I may not have $8,184 to pay my property taxes next year. $8,000 is a lot of money. The Urban Forestry Management Special District Asses-
Sir, I'm sorry. You have to wrap up now.
Okay. Special Assessment District for $39 may be the straw that breaks the camel's back.
Thank you. Listen, we have two minutes per comments because we have a lot of people we have to go through. We have an agenda we have to execute, so...
I'm sorry, I thought I had three minutes.
No, two minutes. So please, let's adhere to the two minutes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission, I'm Thomas Bowe. I've lived in Helena for nearly 30 years. I was struck when I went to the website and looked at information about the urban forestry division and compared it to the Public Works Division. On the one hand, we have over 10,000 trees in the city, and from driving around, I can see lots of additional trees have been planted in the last few years. And at the same time, the Public Works Department has a goal set in 2019 of about a 35% reduction in water usage in the city. Just this past April, there was a water conservation challenge to reduce water use in the city, and I can't help but wonder whether it's prudent to have 10,000 trees in Helena when we have a real problem with adequate water to take care of those trees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others? Please.
Mayor and City Council Members, I'm not a very good speaker in public, so I'm going to read what I wrote, and if you just tell me it went two minutes up, I'll leave. My evaluation of the proposal for the recreation of the urban forestry special district. My questions concerning this proposal are: One, what is the purpose for recreating this urban forestry special district? And I'm not going to read what the reply was on the letter, but these objectives are lofty, inspirational, even desirable, but do they represent the will of Helena's citizenry? Are Helena's citizens willing to fund this proposal? I just received my 2023 proposed property tax bill from Montana Department of Revenue, and it is 24.74% higher than my 2022 property tax bill. I'm beginning to wonder if I might even be forced to sell my home because of all the taxes and assessments I was forced to pay. Two, is this proposal service essential or non-essential? In my view, it is non-essential. It is not a service program such as police, fire, street maintenance, snow removal, trash pickup, et cetera, which are essential for a livable community. It may be a, quote, "nice-to-have," unquote, service program, but it is not essential. That's my evaluation. Three, does this urban forestry special district benefit me personally? My answer is no, unless I decide to have a tree planted in the public right-of-way in front of my house. I purchased my home in 1995. The right-of-way in front of my home has one ash tree. I have pruned that ash tree a total of one time during the 28-year period of ownership. If this program had existed in 1995 to the present, I would have paid $1,092, that's $39 times 28 years, and the tree is currently healthy and not close to being, quote, "doomed to the ash heap," unquote.
Sir, would you share wrapping up, please?
Sure, okay. In closing, I feel the City of Helena is quite beautiful as is, that the existing trees, homes, architectural buildings downtown, and the surrounding beauty of the mountains and valley cannot be improved upon very much. Two, that the City Commission should be more prudent and cost-conscious than the current administration is by proposing costly, non-essential services. As the climate warms, inflationary costs most likely will rise at a faster rate and might financially imperil the viability of Helena's homeowners. The Commission should be concerned about that. Therefore, I do not support the recreation of a special district known as urban forest management. However, I would consider supporting any nonprofit organization that might voluntarily offer to improve Helena's beauty, as long as the consensus of Helena's citizens approve of those beautification projects. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, my name is Robert Throssel. I'm president of the organization Helena, Growing Friends of Helena. We have over 300 members, and we stand in support of the recreation of this district as we did 10 years ago with the creation of the district. Trees are part of the city's infrastructure. They need to be taken care of. We now have a tree maintenance district. We are beginning to develop the expertise. As Commissioner Dean pointed out, we're ready to respond when there's an emergency. And there will be an emergency. The Emerald Ash Bore, pardon the pun, is boring down on us. We have a lot of ash trees that will be lost. We need this district to be ready to take care of that. The district has developed a lot of expertise over the last few years, and they are getting better. Funding is an issue, and that's something that needs to be addressed, and you need to look into it. But that is separate from the recreation of the district. We want to make sure that when you make a decision to annex property into the city of Helena, that it's also annexed into the tree district, that it's part of the district and contributes to the trees in Helena. I would like to address the gentleman who talked about the water issue. All we have to do is look at the acres and acres of bluegrass, Kentucky bluegrass lawn that takes a lot more water than the 20 gallons a tree takes for it to be maintained. So that's a red herring, and please don't be diverted by that. If you want to do something about water usage, rip out the lawns. The other came up that the.
Want to stop wrapping up, sir?
Yes, sir. With that, the 300 members and Growing Friends stands in support of recreation of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, and thank you, commissioners, for having this hearing tonight. My name's Mackenzie Peterson, and I'm the mom of a couple kids in this town, and I'm also a Growing Friends board member. And I'm speaking in support of this district. Trees, as Bob said, are really critical pieces of our infrastructure. They have benefits such as climate mitigation, as well as slowing the speeds of drivers in our community to prevent fatalities from driving and pedestrian deaths. So they are really critical, important pieces of our infrastructure. The amount of money that is being asked does need to be looked at, and yes, we should look at our budget, but we should not sacrifice our tree district and the beauty and safety of our community for that purpose. At the end of all of this, trees are very critical. And if we're concerned about our community, the livability, the issues of climate change, we need to take trees seriously. So I stand in support of this renewal of the district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Colleen Street. I live at 348 Eloise Cobal in Mountain View Meadows. And when I received the letter, I was reading it, and I was thinking, what are they talking about? And I called the office, and I asked, are you talking about trees and boulevards in front of your house? Because when I built my house, I was required to put in a boulevard, the trees, all the landscaping. And I was told yes. And so now that I'm listening to it, it's more of the trees that are located in park areas within the city. That is what I am starting to understand here. So if that's wrong, I'd like to know that. But I'd also like to have more information posted on the website quicker, because when the letters go out, immediately you want to go to the website and look. You don't see anything. And then when I brought in my letter or my vote, I had attached the covenants I was required to build and maintain this boulevard. It was required to live there. And the girl that was collecting it started to rip it off. And she says, we don't need this junk. We just need to know whether you're yes or no. And I feel that that was inappropriate, and I feel she needs some training. And so that is why I attended the meeting. And now I'm finding out that it's more of your general park locations. It's not your residential boulevards, which are the responsibility of the homeowner.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Peter Burns. I live at 614 Wintergreen Court. And I just want to speak in support of this measure. I think the trees are a very valuable resource in the community. It's part of why me and my wife fell in love with Helena and why we want to raise our family here. Just a couple of things to say in support of trees. Number of trees and age of trees in neighborhood is highly correlated with property values, lower crime, lower traffic, as someone else already mentioned. All these things that make our neighborhoods desirable for people to live in. And that's, going to keep it short. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one hand raised and a written public comment. Would you like me to proceed with?
Yeah, please enter the, allow the raised hand to come in.
First, I have Mark Judeman.
You have the floor, Mr. Judeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. I just want to also lend my support to the recreation of the tree district. I think there's a lot of benefit to trees as far as heat island effect mitigation, as we do see a warming climate. I don't think that we personally would benefit at our home with the boulevard trees, as our addition was not created with those. But I still support it for, for everyone, as well as, as in the parks. I guess one request would be that the commission would commit to no loss of, of park space. Over the years, there is occasionally proposal to come forward to, to sell parks, and I hope that we can avoid that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other hands raised.
You said you have some comments you want to read for the record?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have one written comment from Jill Caldwell. If there are other districts in Helena, what funds are used for storm and weather cleanup when needed? Why would only this district be affected? That is the only written comment I have.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a really difficult one for me, probably as tough a position as I've, I've had on, on the commission. But I'm going to have to reluctantly not going to support this resolution of intention. And I want to be clear that it has nothing to do with the program. The Urban Forest Management Program performs very valuable work in the care of the city's trees. Please understand that. Rather, my lack of support of this resolution of intention has to do with how it is funded. In Attorney General Opinion, Volume 46, Number 7, Attorney General Joe Mazurik stated, "A tax is levied for the general public good. It creates a lien. An assessment is imposed against a specific property to defray the cost of a specific benefit to the property, the benefit to be commensurate with the assessment. The difference between a tax and an assessment is not determined by how it is referenced, but rather how it is calculated, and whether it benefits the public generally, or operates to benefit a specific piece of property." In the spring of 2018, when the city was considering the creation of the Service Line Repair Loan Program, City Attorney Thomas Joden stated, "To determine the applicable legal requirements, it is important to determine whether such a fee would be considered a tax or an assessment." This distinction is important because if the proposed fee is deemed to be a tax, then the city is required to put the proposed fee up for an election, since the city has reached its allowable maximum number of mills that may be imposed without an election. To summarize, the discussion that follows a tax is generally any fee imposed to collect revenue to fund general government operations. An assessment is any fee that is imposed to offset the cost of a special benefit provided to a particular piece of property that is not shared by the general taxpayer, and which is commensurate with the cost of any such benefit. Our resolution here tonight states, "A special district is needed to manage and maintain public trees on public rights of way and in city-owned public parks so as to enhance Helena's beauty and environment for the greater benefit of the community." So I'm not able to see how this is a true assessment where a specific benefit is conferred on a specific piece of property. Rather, it seems to me a tax that is for the general good, and thus should go before the voters by law and by charter. And further, if it is a tax, it should not be levied against tax-exempt properties such as federal and state government properties, schools, and nonprofits. So that's my comment. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sir, please, please, decorum. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, appreciate the comments from Commissioner Logan. I wonder, I think this is something that's come up a number of times, and I think we've gotten pretty consistent advice from the city attorney. But I'm wondering if the city attorney might be able to address some of the concerns and the attorney general's opinion and why we have not had issues with this assessment before, and why you do or don't believe we would in the future.
Mayor, commissioners, thank you. The question about whether or not tax versus assessment is one that has been grappled with for decades by the legislature and by courts in many cases. Even as recently as last year, the city of Helena got a decision from a judge in the case on the street maintenance assessment that is levied against the Street Maintenance District in Helena, and a challenge to it on this very issue, tax versus assessment. The judge in that case basically said, because there is a statute that allows for the creation of the district, the city's followed the statutory allowance for the district and the assessment and how it was created. And therefore, the discussion about tax versus assessment is essentially a scholarly one, academic one, rather than one for the court to decide in the circumstance. In the circumstance that Commissioner Logan, you were discussing about the service line replacement program, that was a different discussion because there was no statute specifically creating that program. And so the case law that applied, applied the elements of an assessment and an assessment, pardon the pun, about whether or not those elements applied. In this case, for this district, we have statutory authorization to create a district. In the way we are creating it, it was created back in 2010, I think I heard, and there, and prior to that. And it was statutorily followed and complied with. And the recreation of it has to be done exactly the way it was actually created and is being done that way. So to answer your question, Commissioner Dean, this is following statutory authorization. And if questioned, I would apply the same decision that the court has already offered in the Street Maintenance District. And I would say that is valuable precedent to apply. The AG's opinion hasn't specifically been overturned by the court, but I would suggest that there is a chance that that is no longer good law on behalf of the AG, because of the many, many cases. I looked back as far as 1978. There are cases on this very issue that rule in favor of the city when they follow the statute that allows for those creations. And that's what we're doing here.
Thank you, Attorney Dr. Manager Burton. You have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I just want to make it clear on the record that what brings us here this evening is an update of the statute two legislative sessions ago, where this district was in place legally and duly created. And the legislature decided that, you know what, we think that it's good public policy to recreate the district every 10 years. So it's based upon that legislative decision that brings us here this evening, and legally and duly creating the district that's outlined in statute, statutory law, and has been in place for decades. So I just want to make sure that's clearly on the record, Mayor.
Thank you, Manager Burton. Commissioners, any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if I can ask a couple of questions of Director Danielson. So Director, the, the motion today, this is just moving the ball forward so that in August, we have a vote as to whether create, to create this district or not. So the public has between now and August to continue to weigh in. I think that I've heard today that we really need to do maybe a lot more public education as to what the district does and what it doesn't do, and how we have, the Growing Friends representatives, I think, alluded to this, but really built a lot of expertise that, that has benefited the city. But can you just confirm that all we're doing today, should the commission vote in favor of this resolution of intention, is setting a date for a public hearing where we will solicit public input between now and August, and then vote?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Dean, yes. Tonight is a public hearing. It's required in statute for two public hearings. This is just to approve the resolution of intent to create a district. You're not actually recreating the district with a vote tonight or denying the recreation of the district with a vote tonight. If you deny the recreation of the vote tonight, it, it stops here. We won't move forward. But it is to establish another public hearing date. The public does have between now and August 21st to make public comment. I think we set a date of the 17th to receive it so that we could gather that information and bring it all to the commission on the public hearing date, which is the 21st. So they do have from now and then. And I, I have heard some of the, the comments and agree that this is a, has been somewhat of a confusing topic for those in our, in our Helena area. And I've received a lot of more calls for questions about it than either opposing or denying, but really having more questions. And I do believe that the Parks Director and I will reach out, and also with the Public Information Officer. And we did create a fact sheet on our website, but I do believe that more educational materials would benefit those, and we'll publish that on our website.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I just have one comment before, and I'm happy to make a motion, too. I'll be supporting this resolution of intention tonight. I'm really, really looking forward to more public comment between now and August. I think it, it is, the director noted, this is something that has more or less been in place since the early 1990s, the entirety of most of my life. And the reason that I decided to stay in Helena, because we have a great community here, where we're surrounded by nature and safe neighborhoods, and trees are a big part of that. You'll see oftentimes in many of our transportation studies, that when, when the studies ask for calming, traffic calming measures to keep our streets safe, one of the number one things is, is planting trees and, and increased vegetation. Because the more vegetation you have surrounding your roads, the safer folks drive. I also think that, you know, over 100 years ago, really at the turn of the century, the Helena Improvement Society started in our community. And it was, it was created in order to make Helena the place where people wanted to live and where you would be surrounded by beauty and nature. And I'm, I'm really proud of, of Helena's heritage and keeping up the goals of the Helena Improvement Society over a century ago. And I think it's incumbent upon us to not just think about what's happening today, but what's happening in the next 50 years, and ensuring that we have a green, safe, livable place to live is part of that. But I really hope that we will continue this discussion. And would also like to note that this would not be in. that this would not be increasing anything. It continues the assessment that has been in place. And I think one thing the rest of the commission has really worked hard at, over the last three years, we have not increased essentially any of our rates. There have been a handful, I think, under five before this year that we have not increased any rates. This year, we're having to reevaluate the cost of some of those rates because of inflation, but we have worked really, really hard to be conscious of not raising rates unless it's absolutely warranted, and that citizens will be getting a quality service for that rate. Just some comments I'd like to make before we move to a vote.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the commission? So, thanks, Director Danielson.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution of intention to recreate a special district to annual finance, to annual finance the maintenance and management of public trees on public right-of-ways and in city parks.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, and what I want to say is that I hear all sides of this, but I want to give our employees a chance to update our website and inform the public appropriately. We still have time to yea or nay, should the community is still not informed. So, Manager Burton, I want to, I mean, give all the information the public needs. I heard today that some people are still lacking the necessary information to make informed decisions, so let's give them the information they're requiring. I'll be supporting this also, but I, and that's not to say that in August I would if the information is not given properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Nay.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries three to one.
I know Helena Citizens Council representative says she had to leave. I don't know if she is still on. Would you check to see if she's still on?
Mr. Mayor, I do not see Representative Roth Barber on the meeting.
Okay, then we'll move on to regular items. Consider a resolution distributing railroad urban renewal district tax increment financing fund to Megan Malkin for the installation of a mural at 1316 Bozeman Avenue. Okay, Planner Ray.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. This application for a distribution of railroad tax increment financing dollars came to the city in late April. Megan Malkin, for those that are not familiar with her, she's the owner of the May and June Vintage Market on Bozeman Avenue, and she has recently started leasing the space to the east of that at 1316 Bozeman, which is the home of the new rail yard, which is a maker's space and market. I believe it probably opened in the past month and a half, I want to say. Her request is for $4,250, which is 50% of the cost of the mural in question, which has an overall cost of $8,500 approximately. Her intention is to have a mural put on the full south facade of that building that would pay homage to the district's commercial and industrial past and highlight the working folks who actually helped build that area of our town. She's already commissioned David Goodson, who's a local artist, to create the mural, and he is with us this evening.
Sir, can we close the door, please? Thank you, sir.
And she's also provided a letter of support from John Horn, from whom she leases the property. The Railroad Tiff Advisory Board met on May 18th, and they unanimously recommended approval for this application. If you have any questions, me, I'm happy to answer them. Megan, of course, is here this evening, again, as is the artist, David Goodson, and John Horn, the property owner.
Thank you, Planner Ray. Just one question for you, or Megan, did it go through the Public Arts Committee?
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, no. In this instance, it wasn't required to. The private property owner came forward requesting to do this, and she's using her own funds as match toward this effort.
Thank you.
Comments from the commission?
Do you have a comment?
Just one brief comment. Super excited about this proposal, also really excited about the new, the rail yard. I think this is exactly why Tiff districts are created, and I'm always very impressed with everything she does in the sixth ward anyway, so, or the railroad district. So really excited to support this and can't wait to see it come to life.
Any other comments? Do we have, oh, yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, thank you to the applicant, to the property owner, and to the artist. It's exciting to see what's happening in the sixth ward, so thanks for keeping that vibrancy and the creativity, which draws people in. Looking forward to seeing what's in store for the future. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, do we have, well, she's not here, so, are there any public comments on this topic? Do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised or written public comment on this topic.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I, thank you. I move to approve a resolution distributing railroad urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Megan Malkin for the installation of a mural at 1316 Bozeman Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Consider approval for the elimination of an access restricted, restriction and establish a limited access agreement for Lot 1A-1 Echo 1 Charlie 3, as shown on Certificate of Survey Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Collins and Commission. So we received, the city received an application at the start of the year to remove a portion of an access restriction that is shown on the COS that you had mentioned. Just by way of providing you with a little bit of history, this lot that's owned by the city was created as part of the Shopko Minor subdivision years before I started with the city. The intention of it was to serve as wetlands for properties in the vicinity. They were relocated from Custer to this lot. As I understand things and speaking with Director Leland, they didn't quite take as hoped. However, the property still serves a stormwater function. That's a necessary ecosystem service that we want to assure is maintained, obviously, for the city. The wetlands, again, didn't quite take. We have the stormwater function that is being maintained, so coming before you this evening is the removal of a portion of the access restriction so that Helena area Habitat for Humanity's Restore can access through that access restriction area. We have to remove that from the plat itself, which is part of what's coming before you, and then the other part of it is establishing a limited access agreement. That is tied solely to Restore's operations. It would not run with the land if Habitat were to pull the Restore out of there, but still own it, lease it out, do whatever they wish with it. It would not serve any function anymore without further commission action. But basically, they would be required to maintain the access road. They'd have to install a 16-foot wide all-weather surface. They would have to have the plans for that approved by city engineers. They would have to assure that the gate onto North Sanders is closed outside of the hours of operation for Restore, and they'd also have to make sure that there are no entry and one-way signs installed so that we don't have people turning onto the property that they have at 1320 Market from Sanders. I do also want to note that there are provisions in the access agreements that would allow for revocation of the agreement in the event that there are any adverse impacts to city operations, or again, those ecosystem services with the stormwater detention, and then also in the event that there are any safety issues onto North Sanders. As I think we all know, there is the potential for growth further to the north of this property and increased traffic with that. So, if you have any questions, me, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant is also here. We have Jacob Kuntz, the Executive Director from Helena Area Habitat for Humanity, and his surveyor, Mike Newhouse. Thank you.
Thank you, Planner Ray. Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments?
Mayor, Commissioners, Jacob Kuntz, the Executive Director of Helena Area Habitat for Humanity. I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for thinking through this with us, as we're working to improve the functionality of the Restore and the flow of the donation services through the property and onto North Sanders. Added benefit to this is the stormwater retention pond has actually been a collecting ground for a lot of garbage over the years, and we're now mowing it, maintaining it, cleaning up on a regular basis, and we're going to continue those services. The gates are in place, and we look forward to making use of the full functionality of this upon your approval, so, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, would you look online, please?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment on this item.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve the elimination of an access restriction and establish limited access, a limited access agreement for Lot 1A-1E1C3, as shown on Certificate of Survey 3286330.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Consider approval, second reading of city ordinance revision, trap neuter return. Chief Betty, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. This is the, this is for the public hearing part of the code revision for the animal control ordinance that we're looking at revising. This is for the trap neuter return program. That's under Title V, Police Regulations, and under Chapter 2, which is animal control, and what we did is added the language to the animal control ordinance for, in order to be able to do the trap neuter return program. I can go into more detail. I think I've spoke about it, plenty about it, but if there are any questions on it, please let me know.
Thank you, Chief. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So if we approve this tonight, are you coming back? This is the second reading, so I'm.
Yes, it is the second reading. Mayor, Commissioner Logan, yes, I'll be coming back. I'm hoping not on this subject.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the second reading of the updated city code, Title V, Police Regulations, Chapter 2, Animal Control, to include language and definitions for the trap neuter return program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Consider approval of community aid grant agreements. Manager Burton, or Attorney Dr., or Hockeluck, whichever one, you have the floor.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. I am Becky Doctor, City Attorney. I'm here on behalf of Amanda Opitz, who is not here today because she has much more important duties to attend to at home, and so I'm here on the agenda item regarding the community aid grant agreements. That is the final step in, for concluding this commission's grant of general fund savings that were, that were basically ascertained because of the ARPA grants that were, that came from the federal government. The commission granted monies to three entities after an application process, public meetings, public comment, as you know, and then commission meeting and the grant of those funds at the March 13th, 2023 meeting. The three nonprofit organizations that have agreements before you are the Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group, the Rocky Mountain Development Council, and Helena Food Share. All of those applicants applied under the understanding that they would have to enter into an agreement with the city of Helena and approved, the approved agreement by this commission, and that's what we're here asking you to do tonight. The city staff, including Matt Pettish, who is the Deputy City Attorney, way back there in the, don't let him get away with sitting in the way back, he's back there, he's from my staff, he drafted the agreement along with myself, Amanda Opitz, and Director Danielson from Finance, worked through some agreement provisions with leadership of the organizations and worked out the agreements that you have before you. In general, the agreements do importantly, three things, among other things. The first is provide for issuance of those monies through process that the city can actually do, provides for the reporting requirements for the use of those dollars, and then also clarifies the circumstances under which we hope we'll never have to be employed, but it is clarity for those organizations that they cannot cease to use the monies for the purpose, that they were granted those monies or they'll have to return them. With your approval today, the city can start to disperse those funds, and we can enter into those agreements and kick off the first check sent out to some organizations that are pretty excited to get them. So I can answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Dr. Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Attorney, I wonder if you can talk a little bit about, so this is a comment that we got from a couple of different folks, since we are a, our size community, we don't have the same type of report, reporting requirements as larger cities with ARPA funds or now general fund savings. So we do have, and I think Director Danielson can answer as well, can you maybe talk about the, we have the performance monitoring, but then also the recovery piece, should the funds not be used for the intended purpose or not be expended, et cetera?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Dean. I think that I can hopefully answer your questions, so the city has already fulfilled all of its federal reporting requirements for ARPA grant funds. That was part of the fiscal '22 audit. All of those funds were audited through the federal single audit. We have completed our, our reporting. We still have an annual reporting to do for the next few years, but it's pretty simple. I just click a button and say we've already expended all the funds and they've been audited, and then it's done. So all of our reporting requirements for the federal ARPA funding has, have been met. These particular agreements are agreements to enter into with the city to disperse general fund savings, and there are criteria within the grant agreements to submit reports on a quarterly basis. They'll be submitted directly to me, but I'll be looking to other staff members to help me look at their performance metrics to make sure that they're expending the funds according to the desire that they, that the commission expressed their, their wish to be able to fund these organizations for the specific applications that they put in for general funding savings grants. And so, yes, they will be required to do reporting quarterly. They'll be required to submit proof of how they've spent the money, and should at the end of the reporting period, they've not been able to meet those requirements, they do understand that there'll be a requirement to return that money to the city.
Thank you, and I just want to, at our last administrative meeting, we also talked about the distribution of funding to other agencies. Can you just give me a brief, a short version of where we are with that?
Mayor, we have compiled the various positions.
Mayor, we have compiled the various positions that the Commission has taken. Not all of them are unanimous.
Right.
We're going to put that information together, and we know where three or four or five Commissioners have agreed. And then we'll bring that full list back to the next administrative meeting.
Okay.
And seek further direction. And I think there are at that, there will be at that meeting, the ability to, for the Commission to draw some conclusions.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just would like to thank City Manager Burton and staff. This, the hopeful approval of this particular resolution is the culmination or the maybe, well, the culmination of what's been kind of a long and winding road. And I appreciate the patience that you all have had with us to deliberate. It's not easy to determine how to spend, maybe it was 8.4 million in this case. And, and I think that very patient, thoughtful, and deliberative process that we've had has been excellent. And would just like to thank you all and my colleagues. We've had some good discussion, and those organizations that were patient with us in hanging while we were deliberating on, on their applications, and a very, very good process. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any public comments on this? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve the grant agreements for Rocky Mountain Development Council, Helena Food Share, and the Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries forward to zero.
Public hearings. Consider a resolution adopting preliminary budget, budget authorities, and appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, ending June 30th, 2023, and setting the salary of the municipal court judge. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I am, Mr. Burton, did you want to lead, or are you? Okay. Thank you. Tonight, we have the public hearing, which closes out the adoption of our fiscal '24 preliminary budget. The budget is $99,677,045 in revenue, $103,393,764 in expenditures, and $279,955 for other cash outflows. That includes the, the water service line loans and solar loans. They're just more of a balance sheet item and not really considered a, an expenditure, but they are cash outflows. The general fund has, is spending out of its cash reserves by $1,583,109. Those were deliberate decisions by the City Commission to fund the swimming pool operations to be fully operational and up and running with the regular business hours through both the 2023 and, and 2024 season. The Commission decided to fund community grants in the amount of $23,000 to increase the funding to the Historic Preservation Society by $40,000 over, over our original $20,000 appropriations. So total of $60,000 appropriated for that. $150,000 in sidewalk program funding, and the rest is in capital, $827,000 of general capital in the general capital fund, $201,500 to the Law and Justice Center, which is matched by the county for improvements at the Law and Justice Center. And about $168,900 for improvements to this particular building that are also being split with the county and appropriations for them to fund improvements here. At this time, I don't have any other further comments. The Commission can at this time choose to make any further amendments to the preliminary budget. The final budget will be coming before the Commission on September 11th, and also at that time, we'll be setting the levies for tax purposes. Those levies will include the general levy, the health permissive levy, the fire safety levy, and the general obligation bond levy at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments from the Commission? I'll entertain a motion. Oh, do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, just really briefly, I wonder, I think since, I feel like we've, we have quite a few people maybe more engaged today than normally. And we've gone, we've spent hours and hours and hours on this budget. I don't know if necessarily, unless you're paying close attention, everyone might realize that. But I wonder if Director Danielson might be able to give us some of the high points of the budget. One of the things I, we've really prioritized this year is getting our staff to market wages so that we can be competitive with the county, the state, and other municipalities, and recruit and retain some of the best talent. So can you maybe talk about some of the highlights, since this isn't the last time we really see this until September? And hopefully we have just as much of an engaged public then.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Dean. As noted by the City Manager in his transmital letter for the preliminary budget, the priorities for this particular budget were to set wages and conduct a, carry out the, the recommendations of a market wage study for recruitment and retention of our staff. We have enhanced health benefits in this budget, which have helped in the recruitment of staff and helped also in the retainerage of staff. Staff at one point were paying, if they had a family, well over $700 a month out of their pocket to support their families for health insurance. And now that's around $3 to $330 a month. Very much more affordable for those with families to work for the City of Helena and, and choose to stay and work for the Helena City Commission. The budget presents a 4% COLA to eligible employees in the city. We do have some bargaining unit contracts that are still up for negotiation, and so those haven't been settled yet. So any outcome of those will likely be a retroactive adjustment if needed to those contracts once they, once they are decided. We've been able to fund many, several million dollars in water and wastewater funds and to fund some needed capital improvements in the city with this budget. It's been a very thorough process for each department head to come before the City Commission, not only present all of their long-term capital improvement plans, but also their operations. And I found it, I find it every year very helpful to listen in to the operations throughout the city, and I learn something from them, and even what a scum pump is. So although it doesn't sound very attractive, it's very necessary for city operations. I do want to thank all of my colleagues for all of the effort and work that they put in to bringing this to fruition and, and the actual public hearing to accept the preliminary document. It is hours and hours and hours of, of time and presentation, and our goal is to be transparent to the Commission and to the public, and to be as formative as, as we can to the City Commission to make the decisions. And I think this is a, is a direct reflection of all of the information that we have provided the Commission to bring forward and not have an extremely lengthy discussion on the preliminary budget to this point, because we've already up to this point led up to that with all the information that we've provided to the Commission and to the public. And I will continue that effort going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution adopting the preliminary budget, budget authorities, and appropriations for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024, and setting the salary for the municipal court judge.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries forward to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just really, do we need to worry about regular item three?
I think that would be item eight, if I'm, eight E?
Eight E. I don't know why I said three. Eight E. Sorry.
Well, didn't we just discuss it? We're done.
Well, we, the motion was for D, but I didn't know, it's two separate items.
The motion was for E. We've already completed E.
Mayor, I might ask if, I, I had, I believe that I had the general fund savings resolution on the agenda. I don't have it in front of me, but I think that that was overlooked.
Where?
Unless it moved to the very last of the agenda with the flip-flop of the urban forestry.
People, we're still on the agenda. We're working through the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, as I recall, we, we had the discussion and vote about the community aid grants, which was eight D, but, and then we went right to the budget. Not, I've got an eight E on my, the agenda that I'm looking at.
Eight E. Yeah, we've done that. That was the discussion we had. Okay. What's going on, people? We already discussed eight E. We came to echo.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I believe.
There are two Es.
There are two Es. There's the public hearing, item E, which we've already discussed.
Got you. See, that's why we're not supposed to mess with the agenda.
You're a good and honorable mayor.
You're messing with the agenda. Okay, got it. No more messing with the agenda, people. Okay, let's move on. Thank you. Okay. Did we, did we vote on our last?
I think we have an answer from Director Danielson.
Mayor, I think that, I believe that I had, I thought that I had a resolution distributing $203,000 to the pool, but it is not in the agenda tonight. So my apologies.
No problem. Okay. Let's conclude with the.
Mayor, it is actually here. I'm looking at it right now. It is item eight E. It is the disbursement of the $203,000 to the pool, and you can proceed on eight E. It's all there.
Thank you, Attorney Doctor. Mayor, may I proceed?
Proceed with what?
The. The resolution allocating additional general fund savings created from accepting United States Treasury, State, and Local Recovery Grant Funds.
Didn't we have something on the table?
Mayor, we did eight D, which was the agreements on prior allocations, and then eight E is the resolution that allocates money to the pool that Director Danielson had described, the $203,000.
Thank you, Manager Burton, yes.
Okay. Consider a resolution allocating additional general fund savings created for accepting United States Treasury, State, and Local Recovery Grant Fund, and declaring all grant funds as revenue laws used for the general government services. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have before you the actual resolution that solidifies the Commission's decision to distribute $203,000 to fund the swimming pool operations for both the 2023 and 2024 seasons, so that they can operate seven days a week and at regular hours that they've established. I will entertain any questions that you might have with this.
Comments from the Commission? Do we have the staff to work the seven days a week?
Mayor, I have the Parks Director, Doug Smith, online to be able to answer that question.
Oh, you threw him on the bus. Okay. Mr. Smith. Simple.
Yes, Mayor and Commission, we do have the staff to operate the pool at full capacity per the status quo.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution allocating additional general fund savings created from accepting United States Treasury, State, and Local Recovery Grant Funds, and declaring all grant funds as revenue laws used for general government services.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries forward to zero.
Okay, so we're going down to what? B? Gonna screw up this. Okay, consider a res, oh, she's standing there. She's, oh, jeez.
I think I have the next several.
Okay. Consider a resolution approving the work plan and budget for the Business Improvement District and levying an assessment on all properties within the district for fiscal year 2024. Director Danielson.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Tonight, we have before you the resolution and public hearing to approve the annual work plan and budget for the Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2024. This also sets the levy to assess the applicable properties within the district in order to defray the cost of operations. Executive Director John Dandy is here if you have any further questions about this particular resolution. However, we have brought this particular item to the Commission at an administrative meeting, as well as a resolution of intention to the Commission on June 12th. This is just the actual public hearing to accept the resolution.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments from the Commission? Are there any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution approving the work plan and budget for the Business Improvement District and levying an assessment on all properties within the district for fiscal year 2024.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries forward to zero.
Charlie, consider a resolution approving the work plan and budget for Tourism Business Improvement District and levying an assessment on all properties within the district for fiscal year 2024. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Tonight, again, we have the public hearing and actual resolution to set the levy for the Tourism Business Improvement District, levying an assessment on all properties within that district. We brought this item before the Commission at an administrative meeting, and the resolution of intention was approved at the June 12th Commission meeting. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have regarding this topic at this time. Thank you.
Comments or questions from the Commission? Are there any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution approving the work plan and budget for the Tourism Business Improvement District and levying an assessment on all properties within the district for fiscal year 2024.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries forward to zero.
Consider a resolution setting fees to be charged for disposal of garbage and refuse at the City of Helena Transfer Station and repeal Resolution 20507. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. We brought the resolution to be charged for the disposal of garbage or tipping fees to the Commission. to the Commission at the June 12th meeting. The resolution of intention was approved at that time. The actual tipping fees are going down. Those are set by the county, and so it's a direct correlation to what the city has to pay for the tipping fees. I know that Deputy Director Ed Coleman is here if you have any further questions on the tipping fees, and at this time, I can take any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the Commission? Are there any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Would move to approve a resolution setting fees to be charged for disposal of garbage and refuse at the City of Helena Transfer Station and repeal Resolution 20507.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries forward to zero.
At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, online, I did want to, for the record, read Denise Rothbauer did leave a, a written statement prior to leaving the meeting earlier for the HCC.
Do you want to read it, please, for the record?
She said she would like to report out that the HCC has mainly been busy with reviewing the proposed FY '24 budget and submitted comments to the Commission earlier.
Thank you. You have the floor, sir.
My name is Richard Trudy, and I would like to express my gratitude for moving item 9E to the top of the agenda. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You bet. Do we have any other public comments? Any finer discussion from the Commission? This meeting is adjourned.